Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to thank you all for joining us here this evening. Let me start by introducing our board members. We have trustee Shelley Clark.
Good evening, everybody.
Trustee Laura Brat.
Hi, everybody.
And Vice President Rachel Hurd.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here.
And unfortunately trustee Suzanne Ordway is under weather this evening and will not be joining us, nor will our student trustee Ronit Batra. Want to start off in item 6.0, which is a report of actions taken during closed session, which occurred just before this evening's meeting. On our item 4.1, consideration of student records challenge, the board voted 4-0 unanimously to deny case number 1/2122. Also during this evening's closed session, we made a number of public employee appointments. Each of these were approved unanimously on a 4-0 vote, and they all become effective on July 1st. It's a long list, so let me go through those names. First, principal of Windermere Ranch Middle School Sharon Bautizar. Director of Accounting and Payroll Nicole Kugler. Assistant Principal for Bolinger Canyon Elementary School Kelsey Loscher. Assistant Principal for Creekside Elementary School Sherri Bennett. Assistant Principal for Golden View Elementary School Stacy Campbell. Assistant Principal for Live Oak Elementary School Chai Shui. Assistant Principal for Montaire Elementary School Corin Venetti. Assistant Principal for Bella Vista and Walt Disney Elementary Schools Mary Lou Young. Assistant Principal for Coyote Creek and Twin Creeks Elementary Schools Kristen Berg. Assistant Principal Country Club and Greenbrook Elementary Schools Jody Dave. Assistant Principal for Quail Run Elementary School and Venture School is Margaret Wei. Assistant Principal Cal High School Rhonda Taft. Assistant Principal Ceremonial Valley High School Charles Linton. And Assistant Principal also at Ceremonial Valley High School David Miller. We congratulate each of these individuals and look forward to them taking on these roles, like I said, July 1st. I would just mention, we do have a number, as I've read out here, assistant principal positions. In the past, our focus on assistant principals, particularly at the elementary level, was on large elementary schools. And one of the changes that we're making this year is to not only account for the extra administrative efforts needed at large schools, but also those that have larger diverse needs. And so that's why we have quite a number of these new positions. A number of these folks, though, are internal folks who have been providing teach on special assignments and MTSS services to our schools as well. So we congratulate and look forward to these folks moving into these positions going forward. Next on our agenda, item 7.0 is acceptance of minutes. And we have the minutes of April 19th. Board members, any corrections, omissions, deletions, anything? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Clark. Roll call vote. Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Item 8.0, agenda approval and consent action. Excuse me, just one second. First is 8.1, it's acceptance of the open session agenda. Can I have a motion to accept?
Move to accept the open session agenda.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Clark and seconded by Board Member Hurd. Roll call vote. Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. 8.2 is approval of our consent agenda. For those in the audience, a consent agenda is made up of a number of items that are considered routine in nature, and as such, don't require a lot in terms of presentation or further discussion. However, if anyone wished to pull something off of our consent agenda to be handled as a separate discussion item, we will do so. I don't have any cards on consent. Is there anyone from the staff that needs to pull something from consent? Seeing none. Anyone from the board wishing to pull something from consent? Not seeing any. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move approval of consent.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Hurd and seconded by Board Member Brat. Roll call vote. Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Very good. Item 9.0 is reports to the board. Our first report is bright lights recognition. I'd like to call up Christine Keeney to talk about reception we just had for some very recognized people.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent and staff members. Thank you all tonight for attending the reception that we had for our Bright Lights winners. This is a nomination. Our Bright Lights winners are selected. We had over 100 nominations from our fabulous parent community, and we just wanted to let you know that a bright light is someone who goes above and beyond, and this award honors people who have made a positive impact on our students. So I would like to announce our 2022 award winners. Administrator Carrie Stravachi nominated by principals Carolyn Dobell, Kelly Walton, and school psychologist Pam Oberheiser Lim. Certified staff Shannon Mullany, speech and language pathologist at Montaire Elementary nominated by parent Natasha Verma. Classified staff Carlos Garcia, he's our school bus driver, and he was nominated by parent Michelle Gerlone. General education teacher Bethany Abramowitz from Alamo Elementary School nominated by parent Allison Ross. Parent volunteer Dia Mendel, one of our social workers for her many hours in the evenings and on weekends nominated by program supervisor Shelley Lovett. Resource specialist Robin Vanny, Iron Horse Middle School nominated by parent Lisa Kohler. Special day class teacher for secondary Christine Niemoller from California High School nominated by parent Wendy Woom. And community partner David Fineman from Walgreens Manager. He's a Walgreens manager nominated by workability coordinators Norlin Giles and Sue Frankel. And special day class teacher for elementary Adriana Shembry from Bella Vista nominated by parent Nora Ayat and principal Ryan Mahoney. So thank you to our amazing 2022 winners.
Very good. Thank you, Christine. Are any of them still present here today? No. We had a nice reception for them just prior to this meeting and gave them very nice flowers and a nice certificate. So thank them all. Thank you. Moving on to item 9.2 is recognition of the Day of the Teacher in Classified School Employees Week. And Keith Riedensky.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. So May is a month for expressing our appreciation to all staff in public education. And so I'm happy to bring tonight some attention to that here at our board meeting. So if these individuals look familiar to you, it's because these are this year's Classified Employees of the Year that we honored at John Baldwin Elementary School a few weeks ago at the end of March. We use this shot tonight to draw attention to the fact that Classified School Employees Week will soon be upon us. State law designates the third full week of May each school year as Classified School Employees Week. So this year, it's going to be held between May 15th and May 22nd. This annual occurrence gives us the opportunity to acknowledge, celebrate, and thank all of our classified staff members for their unique and significant contributions to the educational experiences and outcomes of students that we serve here in the San Ramon Valley. We encourage everyone to take a moment later this month to either do or say something special to express appreciation to our bus drivers and van drivers, our child nutrition team, our clerical staff members, our maintenance and ground staff, our warehouse team, our paraprofessionals, our campus safety, and technical employees for everything that they do every day, year in and year out, to help educate and support our kids. So now we're going to transition to Day of the Teacher. And here's a shot for you. So this shot was taken in August, actually, at our new teacher orientation event. And if memory serves me, this was held this year at Doherty Valley High School. So we use this picture to highlight the fact that Day of the Teacher is going to be celebrated actually next Wednesday on Wednesday, May 11th. Now, California's Day of the Teacher actually has a long and a rich history. It was modeled after the traditional El Dia del Maestro that has long been observed in Mexico and in Latin American countries to acknowledge teachers. Its intent is pure and simple: to honor instructional excellence in our schools, in our community colleges, and at our universities. We know that what teachers accomplish with our students each and every day is as much an art as it is science, that the role of teachers in educating our students is constantly and continually changing and evolving, and that the very best teachers adapt and respond to their students' strengths and needs to reach their students at a deep and often on a personal level. We're very fortunate in this district to employ an amazingly talented, creative, and skilled cadre of teachers. We encourage our students and their families to take a few moments on Day of the Teacher, and again, that's next Wednesday, the 11th, to let our teachers know how much you appreciate them, how special they are to you, and what a positive difference they make in your lives each and every day. On behalf of our superintendent and our Board of Education, we sincerely thank and wish our educators a happy Day of the Teacher, and we extend our appreciation and our best wishes to our classified employees for an awesome Classified School Employees Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And again, for the members, our audience, at the beginning of the school year, the Board of Education passes a number of resolutions that are impacted throughout the course of the year. And then we just ask staff to give us a quick update as those dates arrive. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank all of our teachers for the efforts that they put in, you know, particularly when you look at these last couple of years, and really going above and beyond to provide quality education for our students. On the Classified Employees Week, I'd just like to say that had the opportunity to see our Classified Employees of the Year across the district about a month ago. And one of the things I indicated to them was I see our district as something like the performance of a symphony orchestra. And we have our teachers who are right up front and were, you know, they're the ones who are playing the instruments. However, when you look at all of the classified folks we have, some of them are right there on stage as well, but many of them are behind the scenes. And it's delighting. It's the, you know, all of those, even the person with, you know, playing the bell just at the right time. And it's important, you think about it, just like a symphony orchestra. If that bell isn't played at just the right time, it can throw off the entire orchestra. And we have dedicated folks who are providing services to our students day in and day out. Recently, we were talking about our nutrition folks, for instance, and all of the work that they went through during pandemic, showing up when everyone else was in lockdown, just to make sure that our students would be able to get food. But I can point to any of our classified folks and see that same level of dedication to make our school district run and be as successful it is. So once again, want to take this opportunity to really congratulate and thank all of our staff for tremendous work that they do for our students each and every day, because it's that student success that's really the outcome of that symphony orchestra. And we really do want to thank each and every one of them. Anything from the board? Okay, I'll move on. I do have one speaker card that may have been mismarked. Matt Hoffman, this was for item 9.2 for this item? Okay.
I would also like to take this time to thank the teachers and the classified staff for everything that they've done, not only this year, but in the past two years throughout, I mean, this difficult time. It's been, without the classified staff and the teachers coming together, things would not be in the same position that they are now, where we are set up for the success that we are. So thank you for that, all the teachers who are here for, at this meeting today. Speaking of that, I think that in terms of this Day of the Teacher and this Teacher and Classified Recognition Week, we should also recognize of this audience right here, of, look at this audience. I mean, the number of teachers that are in this audience is tremendous, and I haven't seen this, this level of teachers showing up for a board meeting since, in the past two years either. So I think that what this board can give for this week for the teachers is to really hear what they have to say, to listen to them, and take into consideration what they're asking. And then on top of that, I mean, what else can the teacher be, get for respect from this board than to have their needs met, or needs heard at least, and to have a safe and constructive working environment where both they have the opportunity to succeed and all the children in their class have the opportunity to succeed? So I hope they are granted that opportunity from all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9.3, this is the opportunity during the agenda for the public to comment on non-agendized items. And it's important to recognize, non-agendized items, these are things that the board cannot respond to or take into consideration or take action at this time. But please understand that we hear you. We want to hear what you have to say. The one caveat is these items need to be associated with our jurisdiction. So please keep your comments to that, and please with a level of respect as well. Each person will have three minutes to speak. I have a set of cards here. Is there anyone else who has not turned in a card that would like to speak during this point in the meeting? Okay, then we'll move forward. First speaker, Mike Rada.
Because I was a 20-year teacher and coach in the 70s and 80s, I'm asked frequently how public schools became so thoroughly degraded, so depraved, how and why raw indoctrination often now displaces reading, writing, math, history, science, languages. I respond that 1975's Rada Act drove an expansion of radical unionism among already petulant, collectivist-minded teachers. So today, the California Teachers Association and the California Federation of Teachers together represent roughly 430,000 school personnel to the detriment of children, parents, and taxpayers at large. By 1984, in a moment of unusual candor, CTA had published a booklet entitled Guidelines for Academic Freedom in the Public Schools. The booklet exposed CTA's curl-loop hatred of common American and family values and foreshadowed today's school-based brainwashing of young kids. At page 32 in that booklet, CTA snarled its defiant outlook in particulars, saying, quote, "Who dares take on religion, free enterprise, patriotism, and motherhood? We do, and we must," unquote. The CTA-affiliated teacher union here is the San Ramon Valley Education Association, or SERVI. In 1990, after a nasty series of strikes, SERVI was able to take control of the school board in a recall election. CTA's Chapter in Politics Award went to SERVI that year, and the teacher union has remained effectively in control ever since. So today, in addition to taking on religion, free enterprise, patriotism, and motherhood, CTA and SERVI dare also to take on childhood innocence, with systematic guilt trips pushing kids to believe they're either racist oppressors or they are victims of racism themselves. Teacher unionists are also at war with even the defining characteristics of men, women, boys, and girls, and are pushing that same perverse confusion at even the youngest children here, regardless of parental direction. They are proud of their efforts in what they have called queering the classroom, unquote. They started secretive LGBTQ clubs. They deviously feature picture books with homosexual and transgender themes even in little kid storytime. SRV administrators and many of the district teachers believe that they, not parents, should control your children's education. So your children are in attitudinal, cognitive, intellectual, and moral danger here. If you cannot afford, parents, some alternative schooling, you should do your best to negate teacher union activist propaganda and counteract routine unionist assaults on your authority, beliefs, and family values.
Next speaker is Lisa Worth.
I stand here in full support of the LGBTQ students and staff, and SERVI, and all of our teachers. I can't stress enough to the parents in the community to come here and attend these district meetings in person. Previous speakers loud and clear as to why we should be here. You don't really see or get the full understanding if you're watching from home. And if you are the type who just is getting a recap from a random person on Facebook, even more of a reason why you need to come check it out on your own. Sadly, so many things that I've seen, non-district Facebook groups about the district, school sites, how programs are funded, et cetera, are misconstrued and often just not true. For example, if you're concerned about where your ed fund money goes, the best place to go get that info is your school's ed fund meeting. They have one every month. I was concerned about our LGBTQ kids' rights at school. When I was here for the last district meeting, the student voice presentation put me at ease with all the students advocating for. It's confusing on social media when you scroll through your feed and you see parents bashing the district. The influence that can have can be devastating. Long-term financial effects can be... The long-term financial effect, because parents see the negativity, may decide to not donate to their ed funds, just at the elementary level, for example, which will trickle down to paraeducators being let go due to lack of funds, which will mean less paras in the classroom working with your students, which ultimately means it directly affects your child. If you have questions, problems with the district, the best, the best place to start would be to show up here, start listening, ask questions, and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Bob Allen.
Hello, trustees, district officials, and members of the audience. My name is Bob Allen, and I'm a math teacher at Cal High. I'm also gay. I could quote statistics about queer students, but I choose to share my story because people other than myself have made my existence political. I knew I was gay at the age of 10 in 1978. I didn't acknowledge this fact until 23 years later. During this time, I graduated high school, earned two undergraduate degrees, married, taught in Georgia, and earned a master's degree. I thought I was doing all the right things. I consumed hours and hours, if not years, of media portraying straight, traditional relationships. I was even in one. And then I finally accepted who I was. I would love to say that my life instantly improved, but it did not. My teaching career at Fayette County High School was suddenly in jeopardy all because of who I was. A school counselor gave me literature from Focus on the Family when I came out. I went to an assistant principal who said I was the last teacher she had to worry about at that school, even though a bus driver in a neighboring district was fired because of a personal ad on a website that had nothing to do with the school district. And yet, we are still making progress. More people accept queer people, all queer people, than ever before. We have marriage equality for those who choose that, and queer people are represented in stories, movies, and other media. Queer kids are seeing themselves in their world. The moral arc of the universe tends towards justice because of the unceasing work of activists and allies. Their existence is political because others make it political. And yet, libraries are under attack for books that might make some patrons feel uncomfortable. Surprising no one, most of those books feature queer people and people of color. Florida passes a law about parental rights, and yet the governor's press secretary accuses gay teachers of being groomers of children. A leaked preliminary Supreme Court opinion shows a majority of justices believe that cases legalizing romantic relationships among same-sex couples and same-sex marriage were ruled incorrectly and should be overturned. My existence is political because others make it political. When all teachers follow California state laws regarding queer students, when health teachers take responsibility to teach about queer issues and not ask the GSA to do the teacher's job, when a teacher does not yell at a trans student across a quad, asking if they still go lame, when students do not bully other students because their perceived as different, when a student in my classroom in the past three weeks uses the word gay as a pejorative when describing another student's tattoo, when adults attending, who have, no longer have students attending students in the district, stop making mine other queer people's existence political, when all students, especially queer students, stop taking their lives, then and only then will I stop. Until then, I will be a strong and vocal advocate for all students, especially my queer students, because my existence is political, and I long for the day when it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next speaker, Leonard Matthews.
Matthews, teacher, California High School. I'd like to understand why teachers' ideas for our current ethnic studies courses have been marginalized and discarded. I am asking that you, as the board, will look into the justification given for shutting down and not allowing discussion of the following ideas. One, work to eliminate debunked science of eugenics at our district and the language that supports it. Multiple races do exist in natural science, only eugenics. Using race as an identifier misidentifies white as superior race, Asians as a mongrel race, and Africans as the lowest race closer to apes. I am asking the district to dedicate the same resources and efforts towards properly identifying ethnicity that the district has dedicated to properly identifying gender. They are both equally important and should be treated that way. Two, allow non-white educators to opportunity to shape their section of the ethnic studies. Simply put, on behalf of the various Asian, indigenous, European, and African-American educators, please allow us to speak for ourselves. Allow us educators to have the opportunity to shape the curriculum that provides non-white students with information that they should know about themselves and information that students of other ethnicities should know about them slash us. This needs to be done to prevent any further whitewashing of the ethnic studies class. Add, point number three, add European ethnic studies to the ethnic studies class. Give students an understanding of the differences between white tribal identity, history, and culture, and European-American immigrant identity, history, and culture. This will allow students to understand how structural tribalism was set up, who set it up, why it was set up, how it was, and still is sustained. This will be done without pointing out, just pointing to that gentleman there, because he talked about it. This will be done without pointing a finger at any one ethnic group as an oppressor. Instead, points to those with, those who had the wealth and resources to spread the identity falsely. Ladies and gentlemen, I am asking you to investigate why these ideas are being marginalized, why we as, my non-white teachers cannot speak for ourselves. And last but not least, I'm not going anywhere. If you're If you're familiar with the story of Moses in the Bible and he said, "Let my people go," until something goes on, I'm not going anywhere. I'll be back.
Thank you, Leonard. Next speaker, Cora Murray.
I'd like to start this off by thanking you, myself, for what it's worth for the support that you've given to minority groups in this district. I'm myself and transgender, I go by she/her pronouns. I did not think that there were as many people like me at my school until I found the GSA and were it not for your support of the GSA, it would not exist. And for that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It pains me to hear the ideas that were espoused, for lack of a better word, not long ago. But it also gives me hope to hear that there are more people here that support people like me, support people like my friend Ronnie, in our struggle to simply be ourselves, to exist without fear of oppression, without fear of simply existing. All we want is to exist as ourselves. And it gives me hope every time I hear the support that this district gives people like me and people like those in the GSA and other minority groups. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Cora. Next, Alisa Tinker.
I am Alisa Tinker. I use the pronouns she/her/hers. I am an alumni and parent of the district. My colleague Anu Gupta, and she is also a parent of the district, she and I are board members of our local P flag chapter. We don't feel that most parents agree with the comments made by your first speaker. They want a community that is inclusive and safe for all students and families. We want to thank the school board and the district for their commitment to the health and well-being and education of all our kids, including our LGBTQ students. In April, the district recognized Day of Silence and flew the Progress Pride Flag at every school in our district. We received so many pictures, comments from students, alumni, parents and your staff talking about how moving and important that was to them and to know that they are seen and respected here. Thank you for your partnership in making this community a safer place for everyone. Please keep it up. Our students' lives depend on it. Thank you.
I did have one card from Annette Alvarez not asking to speak, however, putting in comments. Did you want to speak? Okay, sure.
My name is Annette Alvarez. I'm an English teacher at Doherty Valley High School. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I thought I would be able to pass my minutes over to Leonard, who I met recently and he's blown my brain up with his ideas. He took the time to speak to me about some of the ideas that he had passed on in an email, which I found very intriguing and very confusing, and he took the time to come meet with me and with a colleague. And he asked, you know, I asked, can I do anything in return? He said, yeah, actually you can come and support me and maybe give me your minutes and I can speak. So that's what I had planned to do. I hadn't planned to speak or say anything, but I appreciate the time to do so. First of all, I want to recognize the students that are here and applaud them for speaking up. It's exactly what an English teacher is striving for when she's teaching those speaking and listening skills, so admire that very much. And I did want to encourage the district to pursue conversations with Leonard about his ideas. He gave three things that he wanted to see pursued, but the one that I think is really interesting is about including European ethnic studies in our ethnic studies class. When we think of ethnic studies, we think of, you know, Hispanic culture or just different cultures. But when he was explaining how when people came to America, they lost their European identity and they were just white, like you're just white now. And it was something that people didn't necessarily choose. It was just like, you're just white. And of course, being a recent immigrant, my parents are immigrants. So when you get to this country, you know, you're at the bottom. And so this new white identity meant that you kind of weren't at the bottom. So of course, a lot of people were like, yeah, sure, I'll be white and I'll, a white name and all of that. And so I just found it very intriguing, his ideas about showing students that they don't have to feel shame, as our first speaker was saying, they don't have to feel shame. They don't have to identify with this white supremacy culture if they are taught about their European culture and taught about the efforts that their families may have made. And so I found the idea intriguing. I'm not really sure how it would look like, but I think that it's worth pursuing and I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Annette. Beverly Kumar.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, superintendent, trustees, leadership. Since I watched the last meeting, I have been thinking so much about my elementary school years in first and second grade when I was at recess and I was stung by a bee. And I was so afraid to tell anyone. I just sat there and it stung and it hurt and I walked along the fence. Everybody else played and I just tried to quiet my hurt. So you'd think as an adult, well, why wouldn't you tell anyone? Why wouldn't you speak up? Why wouldn't you say anything? Why wouldn't you say you were hurt? Well, it almost sounds funny now. Why on earth didn't I speak up? But as a child that was labeled early on with learning disability, I didn't want to draw any more attention to myself than needed. I just wanted to fade into the background, get through my day without maybe one more less teasing incident than the day before. School was exhausting and it wasn't because of the academics. It's kind of ironic if you know me as an adult because there's not much I don't speak up about now, especially when it comes to our kids and vulnerable populations. Maybe it's because of the hurt that I experienced when I was in school. Sometimes the people that were supposed to protect me, the ones that looked the other way, the ones that didn't intervene, the ones that made me feel less than, were the ones that were in leadership positions. When people learn of my background, they say, "You're so resilient." And now as a parent, I hear so much about, "We want to rear resilient children." Well, we think of resilience as such a powerful and positive thing, and it is, but we fail to recognize that it's because of some trauma or hurt that we've experienced that gives birth to that resilience. And so it wasn't until many years later that I embraced my story, not for me, but to stand in solidarity with all of those that have been made to feel different. And as I watched the meeting last week with the students present, I want you to know, I felt your sting. I felt your hurt. Know if you can't speak up right now or you don't feel comfortable, that there are many in this community that will speak up for you and we will back you up. Us different people are not going anywhere. No child should have to speak up and defend their being, ever. Everyone is welcome here, full stop, period. Please strengthen our relationship with the LGBTQI community and let them know that they never have to feel the sting alone.
Thank you, Beverly. Last speaker at this point is Lisa Gross.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for your strong support of PTA. Every single trustee, including our student board member and cabinet members, took time out of their very, very busy schedule to attend our 40th Annual Advocacy Day for Education. I am so appreciative of the commitment to our community and to PTA. It's not something I take for granted at all. Dr. Malloy's participation as a panelist, along with other local superintendents, was a highlight and it's wonderful to have the participation and collaboration of our union partners and the San Ramon Valley Education Foundation. I do not know of any other district that can work together to this degree to benefit the community. It's exceptional to have trustees and administrators work side by side and share information with our PTAs. It's important and notable that every trustee has made it a priority to attend PTA meetings, share a presentation explaining school finance and answer all questions. And the PTAs that have viewed this presentation are extremely appreciative, have a better understanding how, why we, along with other districts in California and PTAs in California, continue to advocate to increase funding. This wouldn't have happened without the hard work of Danny Hillman and district, other district administrators. I also want to say that I am very excited that our district is addressing a key PTA priority, that equity, even when it's not always a popular position to take. I'm also really, really proud that we are supporting our LGBTQ students. And we're also, we're making sure that while schools maintain their unique character and programs, grade levels and resources will soon be similar throughout the district. It's exciting to see cooperation and agreement with human partner, with union partners. Change is scary and it's different and there is resistance, but I personally have the confidence that our board and our educators will continue to do the very best and ensure our children all have the continued opportunities for success. And I encourage every single parent to advocate for their children and to work with your PTA, your foundations, your school sites, your administrators. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Moving on now to item 9.4, Association Presidency Report. Is Tammy here? No? Laura? I guess it's your turn.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, I'd like to start by acknowledging the land we are standing on this evening is that of the Aloney Nation and the Takan Tribe. We take a moment to reflect on those who came before us, their lives and sacrifices, and how we can and should honor their land. My name is Laura Finco. I am a proud member of the California Teachers Association, the National Teachers Association, National Education Association and president of Serbia, the San Ramon Valley Education Association, representing the nearly 1,700 non-managerial certificated personnel in this district, and I am an openly gay educator. Last board meeting, the upcoming successor agreement was opened as we jointly sunshine the various contract articles we will be negotiating. I would be remiss in having any conversation about negotiations without truly emphasizing that our contract is a collective bargaining agreement. The emphasis has to be on collective. It is truly the embodiment of what a partnership should be. When we come to a tentative agreement, it is often after discussion, debate, and it goes without saying, sometimes compromise. And at the end, when we do reach a tentative agreement, it is a collective agreement. Now, I don't want to sound polished, but even when I was Serbia bargaining chair, it was important to me that once we settled a tentative agreement, all of us walked away feeling that it was something we could stand behind. Unfortunately, there have been a few experiences where things got twisted between ratification to implementation. And to speak my truth, that hasn't bode very well for what is needed if our students are truly to be the focus of our negotiations. We also need to ensure that when we speak about our agreements, we emphasize that it is our agreement. To frame otherwise sends the message that one side got duped or that is the fault of the other. Our students cannot afford for us to be like this. They deserve to know that when an agreement is reached, it is with their best intention in mind. Do we always get it right? No. Which is why negotiations are, the process is fluid. Sometimes we don't have all the information afforded to us at the time of a negotiations. Sometimes situations change. CJ Kamik, when he oversaw the HR department here, he said it best when he said that a collective bargaining agreement is a reflection of the current culture. This is why we visit and revisit contract articles, MOUs and side letters. Our students are the focus of our negotiations. They need to be. And when we talk about what they deserve, we know that it's only by staying focused on their experience in the classroom, their access to related support services like nurses, social workers, school psychologists with realistic ratios, along with attracting and more importantly, retaining the best educators in this area to help our students navigate their educational journey as they are, as in the area, I apologize. With attracting and more importantly, retaining the best educators in this area to help our students navigate their educational journey, that they are, that they are the ones that are the winners. When we start our successor agreement negotiations next week, when we take a look at the financial pictures next year, we hope again to be having honest conversations and discussions and sharing of information that will significantly impact our students. We know it's not about multi-year projections because we all know that these are based on budget projections and budgets can change. Instead, we need to make sure that our students are the priority in the budget. When we are collectively, we also need to collectively carry the message to Sacramento that our public schools need to be fully funded so that they can be properly staffed. It's not just about raising the base. It's about bringing California schools back to the level of a national average for per pupil spending and a time when kids didn't have to pay to play or choose between a VAPA course or an AP course because both could be offered and both could be selected. It will take a community effort, so I hope that everyone will partner with our schools and send the message to Sacramento. I look forward to the upcoming conversations and I hope that we will be successful as we were this past fall and set another record settlement on our collective bargaining agreement. Now, as a side note, equity does not mean equality. When we address issues of equity, we need to be discussing the tools of access and it doesn't mean that everyone gets the same thing. It's not about if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. It's about providing what is necessary so all, regardless of ability or disability, have equal access, and in this case to your, to an education. So please, don't give me some box to stand on. Don't give me your box to stand on so that I can look halfway over the fence. Give me the same view that you get, even if it means giving me a little extra. Thank you.
We'll be skipping 9.5 since our student board member is not here. However, a number of us had an opportunity to attend a student senate meeting the other day where we were able to hear a number of things that are going on from our students' perspective and it was really worthwhile to sit and hear the students' voice directly at that time. And 9.6 is our student superintendent's report. Dr. Malloy.
I always loved to be a student, too. That's a good thing. This is the time of year when we get to celebrate a lot. And, you know, tonight we talk about the day of the teacher and we hear about the importance of Classified School Employee Week. Yesterday, excuse me, Sunday, but we kind of celebrated it yesterday. We honored principals and assistant principals. Last week, we talked about school bus drivers appreciation. Administrator's Professional Day was last week as well. And I know that there are times of year when we celebrate our social workers and our other staff members and the lunch heroes is coming up soon, so I'm not necessarily talking about any one group, but what it reminds me of, and we also during this time of year, have the opportunity to experience celebrations. We learned recently and there was a celebration today at Diablo Vista when county superintendent Lynn Mackey came to congratulate Shivante Eddington for being now the finalist in the county teacher of the year. So once again, and I'm thinking about the night of the stars we had, I don't know, a week or two ago, and bright lights, which we just had today. And yes, there are a lot of challenges that we have to work through, no doubt. And yes, we have amazing students, so we got to hear tonight from one in particular that is why we're here. But I just wanted to use my short time to say that our staff, I was out in schools today seeing our teachers and our staff members and our principals and everyone in action. The focus is on kids. It's on being sure that they're served well. I see people leaning into all kinds of challenging situations with probably not a lot of bandwidth right now. One of the things I think we're all feeling is that, you know... One of the things I think we're all feeling is that, you know, there have been so many challenges and so many issues over the last while that even though I don't see any of the commitment to our kids and our communities waning, there's a tiredness. And I just want to acknowledge that as well. While we're celebrating, it shouldn't just be a, one without acknowledging that, you know, this is year 34 for me, and I can personally say that I don't know of a two-year period in that stretch that has been anything like this. So I want to thank all of our staff, even though we are celebrating in particular teachers and our classified staff tonight. And I also want to just put out there that I know when there are different views and different perspectives, it may appear that listening isn't happening, or that understanding can't be found. The trouble is, is that I think most of us, especially, I'll speak for educators, we like to fix things. We don't like conflict. I won't speak for everybody, but that's my sense after many, many years, and we want to make things right. But the challenge is, as we look at our world right now, and our communities right now, and the issues right now, it's not always possible. So we're going to have to figure that out together. But as we approach the end of the school year, and you know, there's another wonderful thing about being an educator. You know, I know that the work doesn't stop and doesn't start like that, really, because there's always things we're thinking about as we come to June and we think towards August, but there is a natural rhythm of things. Things do pause for a bit, and though that pause isn't great for all of our students, by the way, and we know that, and we try to provide opportunities for them, that pause, I think, is a real important opportunity to step back, to take a breath, to remember what's important, to have a little bit of fun, so that we come back renewed. And I've always appreciated that we have that natural rhythm of things, because I would say that, yes, the end of last school year had all kinds of intensities to it, and we thought that this year was going to be different, but I would argue that as we come to the end this year, the intensities are even greater. And the reason I'm saying that is because I think our emotions are more raw, I think our passions are more obvious, I think our wishes and desires are more earned, and we're not always going to agree, as I said. But our goal is that we can continue to work together. So I want to support, celebrate, and honor in a particular way our staff tonight because we're here to serve the amazing students in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. Moving on to action items, we only have one specific action item this evening. Item 10.1, consideration of acceptance of the independent financial audit of the building fund for the general obligation bond measure D election of 2012 for the 2021 fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. And Danny Hillman is going to provide us background on this.
Yes, thank you, President. So this item is, is a required item per Education Code 41020, and so the district has contracted with our accountancy firm, Ida Bailey LLP. They do our general fund audits, and they also do some of our other audits, like for our, our solar debt as well. So the audit was performed, and it has been filed with the County Superintendent of Schools, the State Department of Education, and the Office of the State Controller. This audit went through our facilities oversight and advisory committee. They had a chance to look at it, and the recommendation from the FOAC, the Oversight Committee, and from staff is that the board take action to accept this audit. There were no audit findings. It was a clean report, and the FOAC committee had a chance to dive into and ask questions about anything that they had when they had their meeting, I think it was two cycles ago. So that's about it.
Very good. Thank you, Danny. And for the audience, what we're talking about is an audit that's done specifically for the bond measure, Measure D, that was passed in 2012, $260 million bond measure that we're continuing still today. It's provided a lot of facilities, improvements, renovations, upgrades across the school district, and we're coming close to the end of that program now. But we continue to run annual audits of that work to ensure that the work is being carried out, both in terms of the way it was expected from the voters, as well as being financially appropriate. Board members, any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion to approve the, accept the financial audit report.
I'll move to accept the audit report.
A second.
The motion was made by a board member, Hurd, and seconded by a board member, Clark. Roll call vote, board member Clark.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Hurd.
Aye.
Board member Mintz.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. We do have one informational item this evening. I think that's what many of you are here for. Item 11.1 is information on the elementary slip reading program. I'll turn it over to Dr. Malloy.
Thank you, President Mintz. I'm going to just introduce, and then I know Executive Director Nadine Rosenzweig is coming up to the microphone. So just to introduce this information item, there's been a lot of discussion lately, but this discussion has actually been going on for quite some time about the district's role in decisions such as this and the school's role. So I just want to offer a frame before Nadine speaks about what it is we're going to talk about this evening. So the district's role is to make decisions, obviously. You do the decision-making, we support the implementation that incorporates and considers all students and families. Our school sites have a lot of latitude within those parameters, obviously, state policy, board policy and directions, but there's a lot of professional latitude that needs to go on. And as we heard from Laura Finco tonight, we negotiate with our colleagues, our union colleagues in good faith, to ensure that any impacts or changes are honestly and authentically negotiated, and that those working and learning conditions are the most effective possible. And we do come to mutual agreements, and I'm grateful. We're bringing to the board information about the skip program because, excuse me, the slip program, my own handwriting at this hour, that's not a K, that's an L, and the rationale for it. One of the things that I've asked of my cabinet team is that when we need to think about a possible change, we understand what the problems might be, we understand what the implications are, we listen and engage to understand better, and we try to make the best decision possible for our students. The use of the word equity is one that we use a lot, and it's an important word. The challenge when we talk about equity in relationship to this topic tonight is because, yes, equity is about creating the conditions that each and every student needs. The challenge, though, from your seats and our seats at the district level is that within every one of our 36 sites, we have different needs. So it's not as though we would draw a map around a school and decide what equity means. It's actually looking at each and every one of our 30,000 kids, but that means that there have to be some trade-offs, and this is not easy. Yes, the slip program does provide a great opportunity for small groups of students to learn, and nobody's arguing that in kindergarten and grade one right now. And it is an effective strategy, and it does provide opportunities. But there are also implications. There are also challenges, and we are here tonight to share what those are so that there's an understanding, even if we don't agree about why we've landed here. There are very different views on this issue. We've been receiving emails that basically communicate both. It's just that some are louder than others, and that makes them all important. Louder is not a negative word. It's just when issues emerge, we sometimes hear more than not. I was out at schools today, and I heard a differing view from a number of teachers in a couple of schools, different than some of the emails I've received in the last week. That doesn't make anybody right or wrong. It simply means that we have to work through this. So yes, equity of access is important, and we know that that's complicated when we're talking about what a district is going to do, not what individual schools might do. Supporting families whose personal circumstances not work with our very challenging bell schedules, and we still have more work to do, and we will certainly negotiate that. It's not just about kindergarten slip. When we have single fam, parent families or two working parents without families in the area or childcare opportunities that work for them, we hear loudly and clearly from them that that's an implication. And most importantly, you're going to hear about other challenges related to our facilities that don't make us have the ability to offer this particular opportunity for all. But as I turn this over to Nadine, I do want to say, though, that our goal continues to be supporting our teachers and our staff members. There are multiple strategies that can be used. We understand that this is a very popular schedule that allows for certain strategies to happen. No one's arguing. And as we shared, though, I do take responsibility on behalf of our team for bringing this forward to our Servia colleagues, there is a mutual agreement through an MOU on this matter. So we've tried to take the steps, but we also understand that there are very important views for you to hear, and I will ask Nadine to provide the specific information, because I kind of stayed at 10,000 feet, and I trust that you will go right to the ground with the concrete information.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. For trustees, students stoops, and community members and teachers, here's the why that drove our agenda to not have slip in kindergarten. Beginning in the 22-23 school year, the state of California introduced a new grade level called Transitional Kindergarten TK to serve students under the age of five. The biggest challenge with adding a grade level for students younger than age five is knowing how many students will enroll in the program. For next school year, the program will accept students with birthdays on or before February 2nd. Given this new program, we opened our enrollment process earlier than normal this year to get families to signal their intent to enroll children in TK. Additionally, we asked the district's demographer, Davis Demographics, to analyze county birth rate data for the zip codes served by our district. Demographics predicts that we will have a total of 580 students enrolled for the 22-23 school year, which is an increase of over 180 students the current school year. Approximately nine additional classes have been added so far. For planning purposes, a decision was needed in December around kindergarten slip due to facilities implications in light of the need for more classrooms to expand TK. When kindergarten was the youngest grade level, we would often see all of the students identified in the birth rate data show up at school. We would also see families not identified in the birth rate data show up, too. Historically, this tells us that more families moved into our district than were living here when the birth rate data was collected five years ago. The bottom line is that we expect to see more students show up for TK than what appears in the report, and we need to have the flexibility to add more TK classes as students enroll. Having this flexibility makes it less likely that TK students will be diverted away from their home school due to lack of space. Continuing to allow the slip program at certain schools would eliminate the flexibility to add TK classes at students enrolled in our district. Currently, we have 19 TK classes this year, and for 2022-23 school year, we will add nine TK classes at the following campuses, Alamo, Bollinger, Greenbrook, Green Valley, Goldenview, Montevideo, Vista Grande, and Tassahara Hills. As of today, May 3rd, 2022, we have enrolled enough TK students in TK to almost fill up the spaces we have planned for. We have some students on a waitlist for their home school right now. Our goal is to get as many students enrolled in their home school as possible, as soon as possible. This avoids the uncertainty for parents not knowing where their child will attend next year. Given this expansion of universal pre-kindergarten TK, we're projecting the following. In 23-24, 16 more TK classes will be added. Approximately 44 total in the district. 24-25 extends birthdays to June 2nd. 23-24 is the April 2nd extension, then it goes to June 2nd. Seven additional TK classes will be needed, 51 in total. And finally, in 21-25-26, open to all four-year-olds, additional rooms are needed per enrollment. 10 more, looking at 61 currently. Another reason we looked at no slip in kindergarten was to minimize the impact to families juggling multiple pickup and drop-off times. Some families reported having four different times per day. Some families could not accommodate a later start required for slip or the demands that multiple staggered times put on their family. This was exceptionally difficult for working families. Over the past few years, we have moved away from allowing schools to have different bell schedules across our district. We now offer two bell schedule options for elementary schools to choose from, and have pulled back on extended-day kindergarten. All kindergarten classes are three and a half hours per day. Thank you for your time tonight. We understand this is a topic that resonates deeply with many of our teachers, staff, and parent community, but we wanted you to understand the rationale for the decision that was made at the time it was agreed upon with Servia. Thank you. I'll stop and entertain questions.
Board members, we do have a number of cards on this item. However, if there are any clarifying questions you might have for staff before we hear from the audience, that would be a good time. Anyone? Shelley?
So what alternatives are there for our teachers if they're not going to have slip in kindergarten? How can they continue to do the kind of work that they're doing in slip without the program?
We know there are many teachers in this audience that are fabulous, excellent teachers, and there are several that are not here. Our teachers, there are many schools now that do not have the slip schedule. They welcome the full class every morning, and they have set up small group learning within their classroom. There are a number of ways to accomplish that, and I know Deb Pettish is in the back of the room. We're already having that conversation of what small group looks like. We have a lot of teachers who have reached out to say they would be part of a cohort to sit and meet and discuss this further as well. Thank you.
And with the shift to more small group as opposed to slip, will the district be, be providing some additional support, whether that's with the MTSS, or how, how, how will that work? I know you need to still figure it out, but do you have some sense of, of what we can do as a district to support that shift for the teachers?
All of our schools do have MTSS liaisons. We know a couple of them do not have the full benefit of the days, and they can certainly work with their staff as we have grade level leads at all schools, we have teacher leaders at schools that would also be part of that, and then schools we can look at what support they have now and see what could be realigned within their current schools and have conversations on that.
The other thing I'd like to add is that part of, not, not part of, an explicit component of our strategic directions when we speak about deep learning and innovation is the whole concept of how do we address each individual student, which is a challenge in large groups. But the however is the small groups, the learning centers, the, the opportunities for kids to work in different ways, not just in a large group setting, is something our educators are already doing. I mean, I was, as I said, I've been out and about in schools again, and that's what you see everywhere. So I think that as much as I totally accept and agree that it is a schedule that supports strategies, I mean, slip is not a strategy, it's a schedule, and then within that schedule, effective strategies are being used, we will commit and work collaboratively, because again, we don't do this without our educators, to ensure that those best practices are not only supported but shared widely. That's all part of the collaborative work that we've been doing and want to continue to do.
Could you tell me how many school sites you slip and how many do not?
Yes. So for 21-22, 19 of them, no, that's the AMPM. So seven do not have a staggered slip schedule. So seven do not have a staggered slip schedule and 15 schools do.
And I also need to add, if I may, because it's already a matter of public record and it was part of our MOU work, our memorandum of understanding work, we're talking about kindergarten today, but I just need to put it out there transparently. We will be talking about first grade as well with our union colleagues. And the reason for that is, again, because there are similar implications that not all of our families and educators, for that matter, agree with. And that'll be a process that will be coming back again, but I'm just putting it out there so that nobody thinks that when we start that discussion, that even though it's already been stated, that it's coming out of nowhere. This is looking at the entire K1 program, looking at how to support our educators effectively, looking at what it means to provide what students need and support our families as well. This is step one of a broader process.
As you were working through this decision about slip, how much engagement did the individual teachers that were, that are using slip and/or are not using slip had in that conversation?
So Katie Witt, our director of instruction, and I, we meet with the principals. And so we have had conversations with principals that went back to their staffs and probably had conversations 22 different ways, but that would have happened with school sites.
And I want to say that we discussed this at cabinet today. And again, I honor our principals as well, who, and our assistant principals, but what we discussed ourselves, and I'm just putting it out there, is that we will be much more collaboratively explicit regarding when we need our principals to engage in certain conversations and then ensure that the feedback loop allows us to understand deeply. I don't want the district staff, because we're not that many, to be taking the role of principal. But I do believe that we can effectively support our principals to engage in those conversations and be sure that we get that information back in a way that nobody feels like something's being done to them. Because that is the one other part of our strategic directions that I know that on a scale of one to 10, maybe some people feel we're at a three. But we're trying to move away from this district-school thing. We rely on our principals to do that. We know that they're willing to do that, even though they're as intensely busy as everyone else in the school and in the district. But that is a commitment going forward that we're going to do better with in order for us to learn more about what our educators in schools are saying through the principal, but with a little bit more structure surrounding it where necessary.
Yeah, well, and I think it seems relatively clear that the shift away from slip has to do with logistics, right? It has to do with number of classrooms, with schedule, with those types of things. But the concern that I was reading in the letters is about the loss of the implementation around slip and how to then implement the same needs, I guess, and support, not the same, but the same level of need and support without slip. And so I think that, I guess I would just ask, maybe as we move forward in, you know, making this work, that we really engage the teachers that are on the ground that are actually the ones that have to make the change and implement within their classroom. So.
Why don't we go ahead and use this time to go through the speaker cards that we have available? Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you.
I have a number of speaker cards. We're going to have an opportunity for people to speak now. So if you put in a speaker card, I have those here. Is there anyone else who wants to put in speaker cards on this item? Okay.
Okay, am I?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and that's.
That's okay. So slip is not an acronym because in education, everything is an ABC standing for something. So slip is just a way that our teachers can slip the schedule. So I'll take for a school that's an eight o'clock to 11:30, the children would come for kindergarten three and a half hours. So half of my class would come at eight o'clock and we'd go to school eight to 11:30. And then the rest of the class, we'd come at nine o'clock and leave at 12:30. So when I dismiss my students at 11:30, I now have an hour at the end of my day, and I see teachers nodding, at the end of my day, I have an hour with the second group of children. This is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, we have all the children together because it's the shortened day. Wednesday is a shortened schedule.
Okay, thank you, Nadine. Our first speaker, and these are for up to three minutes. However, I would ask that if someone's already provided your comments, please, you can let us know that you agree with someone, but please go ahead and use the three minutes if you choose. Laura Cox.
Petition to save Sycamore Valley Elementary School's kindergarten slip schedule. Introduction: The district eliminated the kindergarten slip schedule, but this should be a site decision. The San Ramon Valley Unified School District recently eliminated the slip schedule for all kindergarten programs next school year 2022 to 2023. Once eliminated, it may not come back. This will directly harm our future kindergartners' abilities to read, write, and practice phonics in small groups. It is undisputed that children learn best in small groups. You can see Frederick Mostellers, the Tennessee Study of Class Size in the Early School Grades in the Future of Children. After two years of a pandemic and its damaging effects on our children, San Ramon Valley should not be making a broad decision to eliminate small group instruction for kindergarten programs. This petition is for the kindergarten slip schedule to remain a site decision. Sycamore relies on a kindergarten slip schedule for small class sizes. As background, Sycamore's current slip schedule allows half of the kindergartners to come from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, the early sharks, and the other half to come from 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM, the late sharks, except on Wednesdays, when students attend at the same time. In general, the early sharks practice reading, writing, and phonics with their assigned teacher from 8:00 to 9:00 AM, while the late sharks do the same from 11:30 to 12:30 PM. Sycamore's student-to-teacher ratio for these small groups is approximately 13 to 1. Equity is not served by taking away small class sizes. Sycamore has utilized a slip schedule for kindergartners for the last 11 years. Why the change now? According to Executive Director of Elementary Educational Services, Nadine Rosenzweig, and Principal Sylvie Bullard, a major concern is equity across all 22 elementary schools in the district and the need to preserve space for expanding transitional kindergarten or TK classes. In the strategic directions, you can see this available on the school's website, equity is one of six values, including shared leadership, a culture of responsiveness, social-emotional well-being, deep learning and innovation, and stewardness of resources. Yet equity is not a justification for taking away our future kindergartners' small class sizes.
Next speaker is Brittany Page.
Equity means an equal playing field of learning for all kids, giving them the equal opportunity of academic success. Slip schedule provides this equity by giving individual learners more time and attention from their teacher as required. Taking away slip schedule inhibits this equity of some kids in this circumstance. Whether or not San Ramon Valley United School District schools have used or are able to use slip schedules should have no bearing on Sycamore's ability to use the slip schedule to reduce kindergarten class sizes. Education is not a zero-sum game, but rather, the more educated students are, the more value they will add to society as a whole. Put simply, you don't have to blow out someone else's candle for your light to shine. The more support we provide to all children in learning how to read and write, the better. The expansion of TK does not currently affect Sycamore. Sycamore is fortunate to have the space to continue its slip schedule next year. Although San Ramon Valley United School District is expanding TK classes in the next few years, potentially affecting other schools' space consideration with regards to the slip schedule, there is currently only one TK class at Sycamore and no plan to add an additional TK class for the academic year 2022 to 2023. We should not unnecessarily subject our future kindergartners to larger class sizes for the mere possibility that TK enrollment will expand at Sycamore in the academic year 2023 to 2024 and beyond. Larger class sizes would require additional funding and/or parent volunteers. Without the slip schedule, Sycamore's future kindergartners will be worse off. Every day of the week, all children will attend from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, making the students-to-teacher ratio 26 to 1 instead of 13 to 1 for reading, writing, and phonics lessons. According to Director Rosenzweig, the burden to formulate a plan to reduce reading, writing, and phonics groups will ultimately fall on Principal Bullard and the multi-tiered system of support liaisons. There is currently no full-time paraprofessionals to assist kindergarten teachers. So it is possible Sycamore's education fund could be used for this, or parents may have to fundraise. The current plan is for the existing paraprofessional to add eight hours a week into her schedule, but that is not enough to support our kindergarten teachers and students.
Allison Steele.
Kindergartners may need to rotate through all kindergarten teachers and paraprofessionals from different grades for smaller group instruction three days a week for half-hour increments. Additionally, Sycamore would utilize stations dependent on parent volunteers to reinforce reading skills. Yet many parents work and have neither the training nor the time to teach our students. Sycamore kindergarten teachers are in favor of the kindergarten slip schedule. Who has the best knowledge of how kindergarten teachers, how kindergarten classes at Sycamore function? Our teachers, of course. Sycamore kindergarten teachers agree that the slip schedule should remain a site decision. Unfortunately, their voices were not heard when the San Ramon Valley Unified School District negotiated with its union partners to eliminate the kindergarten slip schedule. According to Ms. Janine Cotel, the most productive part of the instructional day is during the hour that I have a slip schedule. I have 14 in the first group and 12 in the second group. I teach reading daily and sometimes either math or writing during the small group time. It is an instrumental part of my kindergarten program, and the small group time is so valuable. It is time to start raising the bar instead of going backwards and taking things away. Eliminating slip schedule is not what is best for the kids. I have sent emails to the following people: Superintendent John Malloy, Director Rosenzweig, and board members, asking them to allow slip reading to remain a site-based decision. Here at Sycamore, we have the space to continue to have a slip schedule. Additionally, Ms. Kelly Bayless commented that equity is reached when one is providing students individualized tools needed to be successful. Slip scheduling allows us the opportunity to provide this due to the reduced teacher-to-student ratio, allowing us the opportunity to provide each student the individualized interventions needed. To date, over 282 parents have signed this petition to stand up for our kids. The following parent testimonials are intended to demonstrate the importance of our Sycamore kindergarten slip schedule. Unfortunately, parents were not surveyed and/or provided notice and opportunity to comment on this slip schedule issue prior to any decision-making, hence the need for this petition. As a mom of three young children, including an early shark in Ms. Cotel's class and two future sharks, my hope is for all of our kids to thrive in school and receive as much individualized attention as possible. I have witnessed the beneficial effects of small class sizes on my early shark's social-emotional well-being as well as her reading and writing skills.
Next, Punit Maharaj.
Maharaj. Thank you. I believe small class sizes are especially important for my multiracial children to gain confidence in themselves and their relationships with other people so that they may thrive academically and do good in this world. Laura Cox, co-author of this petition. As a mom experiencing public school for the first time this year, I watched my early shark in Mrs. Bayless's class grow and thrive in her excitement for learning phonics and writing. The benefit of a smaller class ratio for reading, writing, and phonics is evident in our daughter's self-confidence while reading to us and in her creative writing skills. She has reported numerous one-on-one positive connections with Mrs. Bayless during phonics and writing. And my hope is that every Sycamore kindergartner for this coming year and beyond will be able to experience the positive opportunities for individualized learning that the slip schedule allows. Brittany Page, co-author of this petition. The slip schedule makes a big difference, especially for kids like my daughter, who has individualized education program or special education services. As most know, my daughter has mild to moderate hearing loss. For kids like her, the slip schedule is going to have greater impact. I believe if all parents voice their opinion, we can keep class sizes small at Sycamore. As mentioned before, to date, 282 parents have signed this petition for the kindergarten slip schedule to remain a site decision. Please stand with us as we stand up for what is right for our kids. The decision to take away Sycamore's kindergarten slip schedule next year, 2022 to 2023, should be reversed. And in the future, all interested parents should be surveyed and/or provided notice and opportunity to comment on these important issues. And if I, since I have a minute left, you know, we heard a lot tonight about that, you know, as a district, you have the ability to make decisions, and that's true. And of course, you would, you know, go to those that you partner and make the decisions with, but you also have a responsibility to make sure that the decisions that are being made are not negatively impacting our community. I mean, my child will be moving on to first grade and heard you that the slip schedule may not be provided, but that being said, there is immense improvement that we saw in my particular child socially, emotionally. And most children suffered a lot during the pandemic. I mean, we have second graders that are reading at kindergarten level, right? I mean, and you can imagine what the impact would be for kids going into kindergarten. And although there are schools that are doing them or, you know, not doing the slip schedule, that is up to the school, but this should be something that is continued to be offered. You have the ability to go back and rethink and go to the drawing board because what we heard today were not real solutions that are going to help the kids develop and move forward. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, Janine Cotel.
Hello, I'm Janine Cotel, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Sycamore Valley. I currently teach 26 students. Teaching five and six-year-olds is so fun and rewarding. Each year, I get an amazing group of students, and every year, no matter the group of children, I fall in love with each and every one of them, and together, we become a roommate family. Just last week, a parent shared with me that her son refers to our class as a family because Mrs. Cotel says we're one. Yes, we are. There are so many ways that teachers build relationships with their students, and the slip schedule allows more opportunities for me to spend one-on-one time with them. This one-on-one time supports their individual academic needs, but it also builds a stronger connection with them. The stronger the connection, the better I can support my students' social and emotional needs. Once a child's social, emotional needs are met, then. Once a child's social, emotional needs are met, then quality learning begins. "The most productive part of the instructional day is during the hour that I have slip schedule. I teach reading daily and sometimes writing or math during the small group time, depending on my students' needs. To give you a small snapshot of the hour, I teach phonics lessons, small group phonics reading, shared reading, reading partnerships, reading conferences, and readers workshop. For writer's workshop, I teach a mini lesson, and then I have half the students write independently at their desk while the other half are at a table with me. My kinder teachers in the crowd will understand this reference, but I refer to myself as a sprinkler, and I go around the table non-spot, back and forth, helping them sound out words, give punctuation and finger space reminders, helping the, helping them with ideas because no two writing pieces are alike. And this is just a thing, this, this is just to name a few. In addition, I also have a spot designated for my students that are working independently. They know they can come meet with me anytime to, um, conference with their writing. This is just one example of my students' writer's workshop binder. Every student has their own binder. There is a progression of their writing. This is not all their writing, but just some of it. But every writing piece in this binder is read to me by my student, and you can times that by twenty-six. Occasionally during slip time, it is also helpful to teach new math concepts and to support the students immediately instead of whole group where it takes a while to check for understanding. Hopefully, you can see that the slip schedule is an instrumental part of my program and that small group time is so valuable. Equity is reached when one is providing students individual tools needed to be successful. It is time that we start raising the bar instead of going backwards and taking things away. Eliminating slip reading is not what is best for kids. At Sycamore, we have the space to continue this program. Please reconsider and allow the slip schedule to remain a site-based decision. My future kindergarten Sycamore family, and I thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. Next, Janice Kerr?
I'm never maskless. But I will be for now. My name is Janice Kerr, and I teach kindergarten at Tassahara Hills, and I've been there since the school opened. I've taught kindergarten for twenty-four years. I am a very strong supporter of slip reading in kindergarten. Children come to kindergarten with a vast difference in their literacy knowledge. Some have no idea of letters or sounds, others come in fluently reading. There is a huge discrepancy in what the children can and cannot do. With four- and five-year-olds, their attention span is short, microscopic, and, um, they lose interest quickly if the instruction is too far above their ability or not challenging enough. So the benefit of the slip schedule is we can easily differentiate the instruction, and the children get so much more attention from us in the smaller groups. We also learn the needs of the children so much faster in the smaller groups, and that helps us provide feedback quickly to help remediate their particular needs. Slip reading is one of the biggest joys in kindergarten as I can help children grow and learn so much more quickly and successfully. I love it, the kids love it, we get to have a lot more one-on-one individual time together. Nothing has made me want to quit teaching more than your decision to take away slip reading. Nothing. The year online, no comparison to you wanting to take away slip reading. I have been so upset about this and trying to figure out ways how I could retire earlier because you're taking away this most valuable tool, and it's really discouraging. The kindergarten teachers at Tassahara Hills are begging you to reconsider allowing us to continue with this successful schedule. No time is taken away from kindergarten students with slip. They are all still receiving three and a half hours of instruction every day with an hour of small group differentiation time four days a week. Please allow us to continue supporting children to learn to read with greater ease and greater support in the small groups of differentiated instruction and slip reading. Slip reading is a huge benefit to our kindergarten children, and we really hope you will reconsider your decision because I am certainly not looking forward to teaching kindergarten next year without it.
Next speaker? Next speaker, Jennifer Guffey?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Guffey. I am a parent of a kindergartner and a second grader at Tassahara Hills Elementary. Uh, I'm asking for the board to do away with the current slip schedule for the first grade next year. Tassahara Ele- Elementary is a wonderful school filled with so many amazing educators, and I know that they are committed to providing the best educational experience for our children. However, having these staggered start times makes it extremely difficult for two working parents. We recently moved here from the Boston area where we had a full-day kindergarten program, as well as buses that could provide transportation to and from school for our children. When we moved here, I was informed that the school schedule was much different from that. Currently, I drop off my second grader at eight, at eight AM and return back to school at nine AM for a kindergarten drop-off. The kindergarten program currently relies heavily on parent volunteers, to which I have stepped up and become a homeroom parent for our classes. It has been a wonderful experience. However, this requires me to make another return back to the school at ten o'clock. I volunteer from ten to eleven thirty, and then my son gets out of school at twelve thirty. So I return back again at twelve thirty to pick up my son, and then again at two thirty to pick up my second grader. So that's a total of ten times back and forth to the school all day. Uh, and this is a different schedule, of course, on Wednesdays. We have the half-Wednesdays, which is a whole other topic. Um, so I feel like I burn through more gas going back and forth to school or sitting in pickup line all day to ensure that my child receives a better education. My husband and I have looked at paying for the growing room, which is basically a daycare holding area for children at our school. Uh, the cost of that is close to three hundred dollars a month to hold our child for, will be forty-five minutes in the morning. That comes out to almost about three thousand dollars for the school year. We've also considered putting our children at private school, not because they would get a better education, but because they would have a better school schedule altogether. It's even crazy to think about. We moved to this area of California because we know how phenomenal the schools are. Like any parents, we just want the best for our children. Doing away with the current slip schedule for first graders to have a full-day program like the rest of the school would not only benefit the students, but the homes that have two working parents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Rhea Shembry? Am I close?
That's okay.
What, what is your name?
Uh, Mariah.
Mariah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, my name is Mariah Shembry. I teach first grade, um, with a slip schedule at Sycamore, and I taught kindergarten last year at Sycamore as well. Um, I have a kindergartner in Mrs. Cotel's class. That binder she held up is my daughter's. Um, and I have personally seen the growth in my own daughter. She comes home every day excited, and she tells me, "Mrs. Cotel says I can do it. Mrs. Cotel tells me I am smart and I am capable." She uses these words. If you know her, you would know that. And, um, she's excited about reading, she's excited about writing, and so to take away that small group, I think, would be travesty. Um, that is not why I am here. I am reading a letter, an email to you from a parent in my first-grade class. Um, I have had the privilege of teaching her son last year in kindergarten and this year in first grade. She is also a teacher in this district, Shannon Gagnon. Um, she says, "I am writing to express my concern with the elimination of the slip schedule at Sycamore Valley Elementary. I understand the need to create equitable learning opportunities and academic environments across the district. However, the elimination of the slip, of the slip schedule does not solve inequity issues. To address equity concerns, we should instead explore the expansion of slip schedules across the district by identifying and eliminating the barriers to implementation. The slip schedule allows teachers to individualize and diversify curriculum to allow all students to reach their full potential. The slip schedule is key for early intervention, especially in reading and speech. The sleeps, slip schedule provide, prioritizes the social and emotional well-being of students. The slip schedule allows for deep learning and innovation. Kinder teachers support the slip schedule. They should be seriously consulted as they live and breathe the many benefits that this program provides their students. Instead of taking away such a valuable program from sites that already implemented beautifully, we should look at how to expand the successful program to more sites within the district. This is how we close the op, an opportunity gap, not by eliminating productive and efficient student-first programs in the district, but by taking what is working and making sure all students have access to these programs. The elimination of slip schedule also does not remove barriers so that all students can flourish in our schools. It does the opposite. Without a slip schedule in place, the barriers to learning are only increased, especially when unique situations prevent themselves, which they always do. Um, lastly, the decision to remove the slip schedule is a slippery slope. What is to happen to sites that host special programs like Mandarin and Quell Run, the behavior support site at Coyote Creek, and Spanish at Vista Grande? By the same token, these program, this, these programs would also be eliminated because they are not equitable. This would obviously be a tragedy and not in the benefit of students. Eliminating, instead of eliminating sus- successful programs, we should be looking to expand them."
Thank you. Kathy Crossway?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I want to just first state that, um, I appreciate so much Dr. Malloy's opening comments about how slip is complicated, and, um, then the follow-up questions by the trustees. Thank you for that. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Kathy Crossway, and I am the Servia, A. Servia Executive Board member. I'm also a fifth-grade teacher at Sycamore, and I've been a parent for the past thirteen years in our school district. I honor and appreciate the power of collective bargaining in creating agreements that involve collaboration and the sharing of information with a focus on what's best for kids. And there is no disagreement that the elimination of kindergarten slip has been ratified by all members of Servia in a vote that took place at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. At this time, it was presented that facilities would be impacted to such a degree that kindergarten slip would not be a viable option any longer. This information was accepted by the Servia bargaining team and voted on by the membership. However, we now find ourselves at a place where solid numbers at school sites are being considered for facilities as well as teacher hiring and placement. The initial presentation during the collective bargaining session, which outlined the facility impact of transitional kindergarten, has shifted for several schools. At Sycamore, we have the facility to offer this beneficial program for at least one more year. There is no crystal ball, and we understand that once the facility becomes unavailable, that changes will need to be made. As you consider the kindergarten program in our district, I want to remind you that these five- and six-year-olds have spent a significant amount of their lives in their homes away from preschool, socialization, behind a mask. The students we are serving in our current and future kindergarten classrooms need this small group time as long as we can give it. I ask that you revisit and reconsider the kindergarten schedule and allow the schools with space the chance to decide if this is a program that they want to continue for their school community. The students need us to be their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jessica Pounds?
Good evening. Um, I am a mother of a second grader and kindergartner at Tassahara Hills Elementary. Um, I'm asking you to please consider omitting our current early-late start schedule and instead offering a full day of school for our first-grade students. This is only for first grade. Uh, my schedule for this year is similar to Jen's. I have to say, our, my kindergartner teacher is here, is Mrs. Janice Kerr, and she's amazing. My, I knew what I was signing up for, for the schedule, but I believed so strongly for kinder that the schedule was one-hundred percent worth it. My child did TK, and Mrs. Kerr, being the saint that she is, was dealing with some children who didn't even know how to cut with scissors. So, kinder aside, this is strictly for first. Um, again, my schedule consisted of an eight AM drop-off, a nine AM drop-off, a twelve-thirty PM pickup, a two-thirty pickup, all that made sense for kinder. For first, I don't know that it's, I don't feel strongly about it. Um, I volunteer once a week in kindergarten to help out with centers. I ran a program with, for the, called the Buddy Program at our school, which pairs returning families with new ones. I volunteer in art to help in my second-grade class. I'm also now on the executive board of our PTA. As you can see, I'm very proud of our campus and feel lucky to be proud, be a part of such a great community. However, the multiple drop-off and pickup times make it less appealing for a large part of our community to, community to be involved. Many parents simply don't volunteer at all due to how hectic the schedule is. Many of us that are active on campus are feeling burnt out, and a few aren't necessarily planning on volunteering as much next year. They literally have a pickup and drop-off every two hours. They're even more frequent on Wednesdays since those days are shorter. Again, all worth it in kinder. And first, I think most of you under, I think most of us understand the philosophy behind the early-late start and getting more individual attention. Um, however, between our amazing win time, which stands for what I need, which has just won awards at Tassahara Hills, was implemented by our foundation and our amazing principal, and we also have been able to fund paraeducators. So between that, the early and late schedules appear to be irrelevant for first grade. We, as parents, are all sincerely hoping our district can find a way to make a first grade a full day from eight to two-thirty, similar to two for second and fifth grade. So it would all be the same. Please, since removing this type of philosophy from kinder was voted on and passed on pretty easily in kinder, which we were, many of us were surprised about. In many ways, kinder seems to be more crucial grade to implement it since the children are younger and it doesn't appear to take away any instructional minutes from their schedule the way it does do in first grade, where the children should have school the entire day. Our first-grade children should be, should have those additional forty minutes. I know it seems like forty minutes, you know, it's not much, but per week, it's almost three and a half hours a week and over hundreds of, whole hundreds of hours throughout the school year. So many of our local private schools, neighboring school districts, and most of the country has figured out a way to offer a for, full first-grade schedule, and we're hoping that our amazing school district can do the same. While I'm happy our campus at Tassahara Hills is finally getting TK and that some other great changes are being made on our campus, those changes became available after having some tough years of accommodating extremely unfriendly schedules for our family. And there were years where my child did TK at Coyote Creek and Goldenview, and we were still Tassahara Hill parents. That was really tough. But again, I believed really strongly in what you guys bring to edu- to education for our children. It's been great. Our kids are, have been, both of my children have been leaders in kindergarten, and I'm very thankful for that program.
Please, please finish up your comments.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm truly hopeful that doesn't happen again with our first grade and that you give our first-grade children the full day they deserve beginning this fall, and that it doesn't happen once my fir- first grader has on from then again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sherri Forsyth?
Hi, I'm Sherri Forsyth. I have to agree with all of the teachers here. Um, I te- I've been here, this is my, what, thirty-fifth year teaching? I've been teaching kindergarten and first grade. I came from San Lorenzo that had the split schedule. We didn't have it at the time. I was part of the alternative program that they got rid of because they said it wasn't equitable. Um, but, so, but we started the early-late, and then our other teachers saw it was so beneficial. They went ahead and did it also. It is the one thing, because we've been through so many, this schedule, that schedule, let's try this for social studies, for reading, for math. This is the one thing that truly works, and it works for kindergarten and for first grade um, just as much. These are our youngest kids that, especially with COVID now, this is the one way that we can intervene that's really going to be helpful and beneficial. And that's all I really wanted to say is we, it's something, and the other thing is, Dr. G- um, we, the teachers weren't asked. We were never brought into it. You say it's where we were all going to be included in decisions. It was not something that we were included in. And that really hurts, and maybe we could have come up with some better solutions had we been also included in some of this.
Thank you. Matthew Hoffman?
First off, uh, most people know this about me, uh, that talk to me, but I, I was born and grew up in Baltimore City. I experienced Baltimore City and County public schools. They were very similar to Boston public schools, um, and coming out here was different. And it was a change, and it took a lot of time to adapt. And it was a change, and it took a lot of time to adapt to. And with that, I appreciate what you guys have been talking about, about your experiences. But it is what it is, what we have out here, and we have to deal with the hand that we've been dealt, unfortunately. So with that, you know, we can all win, and the way that we all win is with having site-based decisions on these matters. If this issue matters that much to Tassahara Hills, then by all means, they should take that up as a site and make that decision, and then they can implement that at that site. Whereas here at Sycamore, we have all these Sycamore teachers here and the community here representing and talking about this petition. We wanted to stay. And unlike some of the issues that we might have at other school sites, we have no shortage of volunteers at Sycamore. I know I, for one, am there every other Wednesday selling ice cream. I mean, I have to sell ice cream to everyone in order to pay for some of these programs. And I do it, and I do it every Wednesday with a smile on my face. I keep on asking people to step up, do some of these things for us. They don't, but you know what? That's not going to stop me from doing it because it matters that much to these teachers. And we have to listen to them. We have to listen to what they want and provide it to them in the best way that we can. To Ms. Bullard, when I was back on the Ed Fund, when she first came on, I said to the whole Ed Fund, it's not our job to say no. It's our job to say, okay, how can we help you? How can we make this thing that you're asking for a reality? It's not our job to deny it. So I ask the same of you. How can we solve this problem? How can we figure this out? And I think the best way of at least showing something to these amazing teachers here, and I know we can't do it tonight because I know how the rules work, is I think that it would be them to put this as an action item for the next meeting and to actually vote on this as a board. And if you do support it, that's great. You guys can all support it, put your hands up and say, yes, we're going to remove this slip schedule as a district. And then you can, you know, have that conversation with these teachers. They've now had some agency here. Have that vote. And then, you know, if this is as easy as it seems, then just vote the 5-0 that you normally do, and then we can move on. But otherwise, maybe it's not, and maybe we can have a little bit of discussion about it next time and actually take some action to listen to the community, listen to the parents, and then have that conversation where everyone feels like they had a say in that decision, and we can own it all as a community and figure out what to do moving forward. So I ask that of you, and I hope that you'll listen to, again, these teachers and the community and find a way to make problems work rather than taking things away. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Metz.
Most of what I had prepared tonight has already been said by my fabulous kindergarten colleagues. My name is Julie Metz. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm just going to go ahead and read this really quickly to make sure that we didn't leave anything out, but I wanted to piggyback on what Forsyth mentioned, and that had someone asked us our opinion in the beginning about whether or not we would like to eliminate slip, we would have been very clear about that. We feel strongly about keeping it, so we wish that there had been a conversation. Our team at Neil Armstrong is very passionate about keeping slip. The slip allows us to offer our students a very intensive small-group instruction in reading, writing, and phonics four to five days a week. At Neil Armstrong, we have the classroom space to offer the slip schedule, and we're asking that the slip remain a site-based decision. I know you've heard that a few times tonight. Eliminating slip is not what is best for our students, and it will most certainly have detrimental effects on our youngest learners. The slip schedule allows us to provide high-quality instruction and meaningful face-to-face connections. When we have our babies in front of us, you guys, there's not a better moment in the day. And we get to connect with each and every student during that small group time. Slip is needed now more than ever, especially considering the learning loss that has taken place over the last two years. We're asking that you please focus more on what's best for our students and less on the bell schedule, and please allow slip to remain a site-based decision. Thank you for your time.
That was our last speaker on this topic. As mentioned, this is an informational item this evening, so we cannot take any action on it. However, board members, additional comments or questions you might have?
I have another question. Of the sites that have a slip program now, are they all impacted with space issues next
Short answer, no. No.
So they would all be able to continue next year with slip?
Not everyone, if Ms. Rosen come up, because we do have the date on that. Not all would, but there is some with spaces and some without spaces.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Are they all impacted? So, no, they're not, but some of them are.
But some are.
So did you want to know which schools are?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, so next year for the 22, 23 school year, we have 16 schools that could continue and six that would not. So six do not have the slip schedule next year.
And six would not have room for it, but 16 would have room for it.
Excuse me, please. Please, we've had the open conversation. Let's just keep it between staff and the board right now.
We have some schools that do not have the slip schedule. An additional one next year, Alamo, will be impacted. They will need to go to an AM/PM schedule next year with the TK moving on to their site. Okay.
All right.
I have a very good picture from the teachers who spoke about what their instructional time looks like with the split schedule. But I feel like with a lot of things, we know what we know, and then somebody else knows what they know. Just for the sake of illustration, can one of the staff members describe how the schools that don't have slip in kindergarten manage their instructional time?
So those schools are a little different because some of them have an AM/PM schedule. So now there's a class in the morning. I'm a teacher in the morning. The room in the afternoon, the second part of the day, is another class. So I have my 26 children come in, and what is in the teacher contract is that the PM teacher gives an hour to the morning teacher and vice versa. So they give one, get one, is what it's known as, and they teach, they can reduce their groupings that way. We have schools that don't have AM/PM. Their kindergarten classes come in the morning, and they do not stagger the start and end time. So all children come, the 26, and they welcome the children. They have stations that, some of them do have pairs, some of them do have parent support, but they have worked out when the reading time is for a small group based on needs. And then the other children have been taught the expectations in the class, what is happening, and the teacher works with all the children on their needs for their reading development, their phonics, their fluency, and they have set it up that way. They also have the win time, what I need, or common learning time, and they work on push-in and small group inside and outside. So everyone does it a little bit differently, but they are able to manage their groupings that way.
Thank you, Nadine. I just wanted to ask that because we all have the paradigm that we're used to, right? And when my kids were in kindergarten at Country Club, we had the AM/PM, so the second or first one you described was what I'm familiar with. I think the hardest thing is that we know everyone wants to do the best they can for the kids. It's just sometimes what you're used to, you know this works, you know I can do my best, but just saying, it helped to hear the different perspectives of what's possible, what is, right? Thanks.
Nadine, I guess as a follow-up to that, do we have any data that actually shows the value of one approach versus another if we weren't looking at schedules and parent issues and everything else?
It's not that simple, and I didn't know if Deb Pettish wants to come up on that.
Good evening, board. Excuse my voice. So we did analyze the data. As Nadine said, it's challenging to look at data because there are so many variables involved. However, we did analyze what's called our ESGI, which is our screener data for kindergartners this year, and we found that the slip classrooms versus the non-slip classrooms from an academic standpoint, based on ESGI data, there was really no difference for kindergarten students this year with their screener assessment.
Yeah. From an equity standpoint, to do away with slip in kindergarten, are there additional resources that other schools have that these schools do not have in terms of para-support or, as mentioned, also donations, you know, to site donations, things of that nature? I'm just wondering where the equity issues come into play.
No, not necessarily. And there's really no difference in supports that I know of with regard to the slip classrooms versus the non-slip classrooms. Their tier-one curriculum materials, for example, are all the same. The supplementary resources are fairly consistent. Teachers, of course, have more leeway and say over what they choose for the supplementary, but there's nothing additional given to slip or non-slip classrooms.
And I think I will add that that is where site-based decision-making, partnering with families, fundraising, volunteering does come into play. So I want to just put that out there, that that is a factor in the way in which different schools operate, but in terms of staffing or budgets coming from us, no, there's no difference. But each, this is where I said the district sets some of the parameters, and then all kinds of different things happen at school level. That's a perfect example of different things happening at school level. I think the two other pieces, when we talk about the equity question, though, and again, I said it at the beginning, site-based decision-making, if you have space for as long as you have it, allows for programming at those places. Your challenge working with us is, we've got to balance when 36 places need access to something. But it's not just about taking away, because we've heard it. I totally accept, and I've seen it in action. I was in classrooms today looking at this inaction, that it's well-used, it's serving our kids well. And I was in classrooms and it wasn't used today, and I saw great teaching and learning. So there's no argument about what someone might believe is necessary. All that I was saying and continue to say is, there are other parts of our country and beyond that have never, ever seen this schedule, and kids can still do really well. And there are opportunities like we have had to utilize it, and it's worked really well. There's no negative here, but we're looking forward. And the point I raised with you in terms of what we struggled with as we made this decision is, I understand for that particular school who might have that opportunity because they have space, then that's an equitable response on our part. But I don't know what I would say to the other six schools or however that may be going forward, because the other piece we are aware of, and we haven't seen it yet, and I also understand we're in a time of change. I come from a place that has had universal TK for years. Kindergarten changed when universal TK is in full implementation. We're not there yet, and we're not going to be there for a while. So we're going to have to be in close collaborative proximity to each other as our world changes, as TK is universally implemented. That's another factor. And then the only other factor, when you talk about equity, and again, respecting that there were a few other voices in the room that didn't get the same affirmation, and that's fair because everyone feels strongly about what they believe, but that's a voice that we heard a little bit of that's also a very loud voice in our district. They just might not be here tonight because we are not seen, frankly, as having the most family-friendly schedule. So the question is, we want to engage our staff better, because I'm hearing we need to do that, and thank you for that feedback. We want to always work with our union colleagues collaboratively. We want to make the best decisions based upon evidence, and we also have to be engaging our families. And this is not widely agreed upon. I would never allow us to bring anything forward if I was afraid the options or the other strategies were harmful to kids. I wouldn't allow us to do that. But I'm getting the emotion. I understand the challenge, but I also think that your and our challenge is that when you ask about equity, there are different ways of looking at it. This is not as simple as this is equitable and this is not. This is a great strategy, schedule strategy, and there are other great strategies. And we're in that situation, that difficult situation, where what does it mean to provide equitable access and effective programming and support for our educators and support our families? There's a lot of ands there, which is what makes this so complex.
Well, and I think the complexity of it and the fact that we are coming off of a couple of years of high burden for the whole community. And so I would ask, why now? Why so quickly? Why all school sites? Why not roll out this transition to what it sounds like will have to eventually be because of space concerns, because of facility concerns, because of a shift in kindergarten once there's universal TK? But why do we have to do it right now, quickly into the next year? Why not?
Well, I think the question is around facilities. So there is the flexibility that some schools will need more TK rooms and some will not. And those numbers are completely unpredictable right now, as I believe one of the speakers had stated. So I can't give a definitive answer that the why not versus the why now, because absolutely, could we continue for one more? Yes. I don't know the exact projections for all TK classes at each of the sites. We have a rough estimate of where it could be, and we have rough estimates of where it can't be, but could it be in play? Absolutely, that could be your decision to keep that in play another year.
And I can add, as someone who's still newer to the district, even though two years means I have to stop using this, our bell schedules is something I, as a superintendent, have never seen. We spend more time on bell schedules than I've ever experienced, said respectfully, we negotiate bell schedules more than anything. And our educators validly have profound, intense reactions to bell schedules, not because of the schedule, because what it means for kids. So there's also a piece where, as we're trying to bring about some pretty significant implementations, TK, universal TK is coming in. Our facilities equation is a question mark, and we also know that when we need to make decisions like this, and I can say this now confidently in our district, when it's a change like this, it will have all kinds of reaction. So the question becomes, is there ever a good time? Maybe you would say next year. I'm not so sure next year will be any better, but I guess we could clearly do that. So there's a point where it's like, where do we make the decision, negotiate its impacts, and move to the next step? That's where we are. If you wanted to make a different decision, please know that the expectation, rightfully so, would be we need to renegotiate, not renegotiate, negotiate that. And we've got families who were relying on our bell schedules months ago, because that starts a long time ago. What are you planning? What are you doing? What are your dates? So we're in this challenging spot that differing views, challenging circumstances, and some timelines that haven't been on our side even when we were negotiating this and discussing this, because some people needed this information before we actually even finalized it. So that's just another piece for you to think about as you deliberate this. But I do want to say that what I hope is coming through, if anyone's watching and our people here, there's no judgment, there's no criticism, there's no argument about the good that's happening. There's just a complexity that we have to wrestle with. And I just hope that people are hearing that it wasn't just, oh, by the way, let's just do this. This discussion started probably before me, but it has been on our cabinet plate since the day I arrived, and it probably predates me, and that's coming up on two years this July. So this isn't a new conversation. This is a constant conversation, and one that we basically just said, in light of the facilities piece, unknown. In light of the TK piece, coming in, and in light of the different views on this, with an understanding that we can provide support to educators, we just said, let's go. So that's what it is. And again, if your feeling is that it needs to be different, just know that those are the steps that we would need to take. And again, we would receive, we receive the feedback openly, and we receive direction clearly, but those are all the complexities that we're dealing with right now. But those are all the complexities that we're dealing with right now.
It, it seems to me that one of the issues is, you know, and somebody even said, we rip the Band-Aid off and just go for change now. My concern particularly is something that Christine said in terms of, you know, the, the things we don't know right now at this point. And I'd be fearful of not making this change and then finding as numbers increase potentially in terms of what we need at different sites, that all of a sudden, before the next school year even starts, we have to make changes to a school site that impacts schedules again, impacts families, potentially impacts kids having to be diverted to additional other school sites. Those are the concerns that I would have with, you know, putting it off. And also in terms of recognizing that it appears because of particularly the facilities needs, I assume between TK and kindergarten classrooms and the needs in those classrooms, when, you know, we would have to absolutely make these decisions going forward. The other question, I guess, that comes up for me is of those different schools where we have the slip schedule right now, I, I appreciate what we're hearing from our teachers here and, and the value that they see in the program. But I also wonder of teachers that don't value it as much as the opportunity to do something else because of the schedule impacts. I've been around long enough that I recall quite frankly, that as Dr. Moy said, this is not a new issue. I remember us talking about slip schedules back in the early nineties and the impacts that we had in 96 when Pete Wilson at the time had to switch over a summer to class size reduction programs and the impact that it has on everyone at that point in time. So, and I don't know, it, like I said, it's not an action item for us. But is there anything that board members would like to see come back to us in any form at this point? Kind of looking for some consensus if there is something more that we want to see on this.
Well, I guess if we were to entertain a backtrack in the spirit of site-based decision-making, I think we would want to get the input from the teachers at those sites. But we would also want to get the input from parents. And is that a doable ask in two weeks? Because, I mean, it would be conceivable that of the 16 schools that have space to continue, continue it, five or six or three decide they want to and, and the others say, no, we're ready to, to move to the new schedule. Does the, the schedule alignment, I mean, so, so
Absolutely.
I, I, I wouldn't want to just say, oh, let's pull it back, you know? I, I'd want to put it back at site-based decision.
And, and I think we would make every effort to make that happen, to gather that feedback. Absolutely do I think it's important.
I think the piece to add is we're at May 3rd, I had to look down. And a different direction to go to site-based takes some time and we need to negotiate before we communicate. So again, I think that's another thing for you to, these are just the fact, we can do anything. But it's, there are steps that we have to take and we're already in the first of May. And again, my guess is if my inbox reflects this, when we open that up, I'm expecting that we might have a different room. I'm guessing based upon what we've heard. So that's not to say no, it's just you have to decide if we can push that out. And if you would like us to do that, the steps would be we could engage. In fact, we need to collaborate with our union colleagues and they're here. But so I don't want to sound like that's not happening. And we'd have to figure out what that timeline would look like.
It would all have to be framed, caveated with that if an additional TK classroom had to be open at this given site, it could all be off the table, recognizing that's disruptive to staff and disruptive to families. So it's kind of like careful what you wish for, right?
Again, realizing, I'm just going to offer a thought. And I don't need, we don't need, we don't need a direction from you, which would take another meeting. We could do this. And again, I apologize to our colleagues that I'm saying something that I haven't asked you about because I'm thinking on my feet. We can always ask our families and our staff through an easy format that gives people a couple of days to tell us what they think about this. And then take what we learn. Realizing though, as I'm looking at the data, there are some to President Min's point, and this is what makes this really difficult. And I can't even look over here right now because I know what I'm getting. Because there are some schools that are so close to no that then you start to get into how insincere is that if you're asking, actually asking for their opinion, even though they're not in no yet? So for instance, there's one school here that if three more kids come in, they're a no based upon you, or we're redirecting those three kids. See, this is why this isn't as simple as you can all do it. However, if we, and I'm looking down to the side of the table, if we put all these caveats in that it's still not a sure thing and we're still not clear about the facilities data and we still don't know if it's possible, but if you had your way, what would you like to see happen, staff and parents at 22 sites? That's a simple survey. That can go out with a deadline. And we can be even clearer and say, if you don't respond, it means X in big bold letters because you need to actually understand what a no vote means. Because we've learned the hard way in COVID year, that that was another one of our big problems. We didn't know what some people even thought. We can do that without you having to pass a vote if you would like us to. I would just take it as advisement, if that makes sense. That was a long
So we're not viewing this as a choice, like when you were committing to being hybrid, if we could go hybrid or, or staying remote. It's, it's what's your preference? Because we're trying to gauge our community, engage the interest. And we might even want to say if your numbers are five or less, we got to hold you as a TK site.
I would like to have that information as a board member. I haven't, as a new sitting member, I haven't had this conversation before other than when this issue was brought up in the last month or so. So for me, it would be important to have that information, especially in light of all the teachers who are here and the benefits that they feel that the kids are getting from this program.
And if I may, I don't, and, and said respectfully to our parents who want something immediate for first grade because of those challenges, I don't think that's as easily doable, frankly. However, if we're going to ask, because I do know the issues are very different in first grade and we heard it tonight, actually talking about 40 minutes a day difference. So I think we should ask the question broadly, even though again, we'd have to word it in such a way that I don't believe we could make massive changes the first week of May for August, even if there's a resounding desire to do so, because the, the big operations of this doesn't work that simply. It's not the same thing in first grade as it is in kindergarten, as we heard very eloquently tonight. So I would like to let you know that should we do this, if that's what, if you give me that advice without a vote, I would like to incorporate the first grade piece as well, even if that's not on the table at the moment.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I, and I think it'd be good for us to have that information. I also think that it's important for the community to understand that facilities are an issue and so that's part of the parameter, as well as pushing students, incoming TK students to another feeder school. Because, because we all know that once you start at a feeder school that's four miles away from the, the neighborhood school that your neighbor kids, that your kids' friends who they grew up with go to, most likely those students are going to continue in on that school because they will have made their friends in TK and the parents will have made their, you know, they'll have their community there. And so as much as we can, as much as we can pay attention to that fact that those numbers and the, the number of students that would have to be pushed to another school site is, is a real consideration. I, you know, as I had said in one of my earlier questions, I am concerned about, about the fact that, that perhaps we didn't get as much information as maybe we needed from the teachers that are in the classroom on why a slip schedule is important for them in the classroom and for their students. And then the other, the other kind of thing that keeps coming to mind with me is, so I, you know, I came from, I, my kid started kindergarten first grade on the East Coast. I came into California and was blindsided as well by this crazy schedule, early out, late start, PM, AM kindergarten, you know, all this crazy stuff. It was, it, it bonkers. And class size is also a big concern and has been a big concern for a long time and specifically in California. And when I think of a slip schedule and I hear that 13 as opposed to 26 in a kindergarten classroom, and we know that it's very difficult for us as a district to fund for lower class sizes, oftentimes that, that burden is put on an individual school site ed fund to fund a para to go into that classroom to reduce the, the, the student to adult ratio or parent volunteers. And so, so when we're, when we're talking about this, just to, I mean, I don't know what the ask is, but really just to pay attention to the fact that we spend a lot of time and energy trying to figure out how to lower class sizes and a split, sub-schedule does that for some school sites. I just want to kind of put that out there as, as something to, to think about, so.
And I would say from a superintendent's point of view, if facilities was of no issue and the majority of our families felt it was the right thing to do, we've already heard from the teachers who are here. Again, I have some others that have reached out that weren't interested in coming tonight, who have a different view, which is fair. Then it's a different conversation. There, there are no, there are no constraints that we're looking towards. Now whether, just because those, those constraints aren't necessarily as intense right away, we do have some pretty decent sense that they're close. So part of what we also have to think about in the spirit of change management is this is a, never an easy conversation if you love it. This is a wonderful conversation if you don't. In other words, it's going to be at some point in some schools, sooner than later, not possible. And then our job is to figure out, and this is what I've been really struggling with is, how do we work closely with our educators and in particular our teachers? Because it's not going to be possible everywhere. And then what's that saying? These schools are better than these? No, we're not saying that. And that's one of the reasons I'm being very careful how I speak, because it's like, yes, this is a great schedule that provides strategies and there are options. Because if we weren't confident about that, then we were saying that these are the lucky schools and these aren't. And that's not okay from a district perspective either. So that's another consideration that we're wrestling with.
Clearly a complex topic. I, I also think it'd be a good idea to, to get that data. Because if, for no other reason, as a district, recently we've really been pushing for opening more lines of communication, more engagement with both our staff and our community. And my thinking is that when we do that, maybe it opens everyone's eyes to the level of complexity of some of the issues that we do have to deal with. But here, the opportunity to do it, even if it's a little late in the process, getting some of that data, I think would be really worthwhile. Okay, so if that's consensus, we'll leave it at that. I do want to thank everyone who's provided their input this evening and more to come. We'll see where it goes. The only other item on our agenda this evening is administrative matters, board member reports. Shelley.
So Ken and I attended the Town of Danville, wow, that's a way to clear the room.
Don't take it personally, Shelley.
I try not to. Okay. Ken and I attended the Town of Danville liaison meeting and seems like the town is doing well. They're struggling with the, the housing mandate from the state and how we're going to put all those extra houses in our, in our town and what that's going to look like. And they're moving into their new offices here pretty soon, so they're excited about that. I attended my last social emotional wellbeing meeting for the year and that's been a really rewarding committee to be on because of the obvious reasons. You know, coming off the pandemic and how important the mental health is of our students and the concerns that we have, and we've been able to make some good strides, I think. And I'm looking forward to next year. Advocacy Day, as Lisa Gross shared, was phenomenal. And there was a lot of great information. And one of our legislators was there, Rebecca Bauer-Cann. And she shared some of her views and, and her support for raising the base. And we're hopeful that that movement is going to continue because in the next few months, it is critical that we advocate for that because there are bills in the assembly right now that would affect us greatly in a positive way. And it's an opportunity that we haven't had for years and years. Last night I did the school finance presentation with my fellow board member, Susannah Ordway. And we had some people, we did it on Zoom and that seemed to reach more people. I appreciate everybody who showed up and their thoughtful questions. And a special thank you to Danny Hillman, who, who took the hardball questions and did an incredible job explaining some of the complexities of school budgets and financing. As Ken mentioned earlier, we visited with the Student Senate yesterday, which was, I've been waiting all year to do that. It was a huge treat. If these are the individuals who are going to be in charge of our world as we get older and move forward, we're in great shape. These are some exceptional students and the work they're doing at their school sites and in the Senate and their input and their voices are amazing. We were able to hear the 10 candidates who are vying for Ronnet's seat on the board. And let me just say, there are some incredible students that we heard from, but those are going to be some really big shoes to fill. He has been incredible, he's brilliant and I'm going to miss him. But I'm looking forward to our next candidate and working with them. I think there's more stuff, but we, we also went to the Dushana Celebration of Hindu Culture on Sunday. Ken and Rachel were there too. And that was an incredible experience and so educational and they were so welcoming. And it was a great community event, learned a lot. So with that, I'll turn it over to Laura.
I want to first piggyback, piggyback on the PTA advocacy day and just remind folks that there's resources. The website that I wrote down was SrVCouncilPTA.org. But I'm assuming most of the school site PTAs will also have links to resources. I believe there's letters, there's email addresses and phone numbers that you can call and, and specific talking points. So it's important to, to utilize that as well and keep the, keep the advocacy going. So my son asked that I, that I talk about this, it's an exciting thing with the Cal Art Program. So they have made the top 50 in the nation for custom culture, which is a vans program, an art program. They designed some vans shoes. And if they win, they will win $50,000 for the art program. If they're in the top five, they win $15,000. So folks can vote every day. It's customculture.vans.com. And voting ends on Friday, so please vote. We had our last, our last Equity Steering Committee on Wednesday. And I want to thank Hong and John for facilitating this wonderful, wonderful committee and thank everyone that participated. It was just a really great opportunity for all of us to understand others' perspectives. And, and they provided a space for us to really speak openly. And I learned a lot and I'm really grateful for the information and the insight that I was able to, to receive there. We had a CCC SBA meeting that I think we were all at. And, and I think Rachel was the one that, that facilitated the program. And we had a woman who spoke about racial equity and it was very informative for me and, and provided some insight that I hadn't heard yet and I really appreciated that. And then I guess that's, I guess that's it. So thank you. Virtual financial informational meeting, so I raised the base. So thank you.
Okay, trying not to duplicate. I don't think this was said, we had the last Deep Learning and Innovation Steering Committee meeting, just not quite two weeks ago. And I'd like to thank Deb and her team for facilitating that important committee all year. Like Laura, I was at the Equity Steering Committee meeting last week and thought it was really great how John and Hong have created an opportunity for the Culture and Climate Committees' work from previous years to have a way to fill in to the Steering Committee. And they've done a nice job creating voice for those subcommittees. And they've done a nice job creating voice for those subcommittees from that committee so that their work didn't just die, and so that's a good thing. Advocacy Day was wonderful. Last week, Ken and I did a Raise the Base presentation at Montevista in person. We had three people attend, but it was a very worthwhile conversation with a lot of interaction. And we got to clarify some misunderstandings and like to thank the staff that was there as well, Danny and Keith and Alana and Angie Coratone. Right after that, it ran long, but I got the last 15 minutes of the choir festival that was also at Montevista. It was like one of those area festivals, choirs and students from Diablo Vista and Alamo were also there. And man, you hear those kids sing and it's like, it really is like angels. Their talent is just amazing and to see it at the three different levels and how they're mentoring each other or just maybe not mentoring, but supporting each other was really something to see. I got to do a really special thing last Wednesday. I was asked by two government teachers at Montevista to be part of a government, local government panel. So I was with the mayor of Walnut Creek and representative from Assemblymember Bauer-Cann's office, Marilyn Lucy. And the three of us took questions, talked about all kinds of things. And the students came so prepared. It was really impressive and it was a nice dialogue and I really would look forward to doing that again. That was really fun. And Student Senate meeting yesterday was very impressive and so was the Dhoshana event. That was, for a long time, I think, members of the Hindu community have emailed board members seeking more representation of their culture in our social studies curriculum. And so it was really great to see them being proactive in this kind of way. It's something they want to continue doing. And it was a very effective way, I think, of engaging the community with their culture. And it was just done in such a very nice, respectful way. And last thing, tomorrow is the SELPA, Special Education Local Plan Areas Legislative Sharing Day. So I'll be joining members of RCAC to participate in that. And then we have a meeting with Senator Glazier right after.
So just to add a couple of things, number of already mentioned. I did provide a, a finance presentation to the Alamo PTA. It had about, about 20 people, that was virtual last Wednesday evening. Again, got a lot of great questions and really great opportunity. Again, want to thank Danny for all the work he does behind the scenes in putting together the presentations and keeping us all on track. Also did want to mention the Dhoshana event as well. You know, one of the things that I really took away from that event was the value and direction we're going with Ethnic Studies. The opportunity to learn from each other and to learn respect of our differences. It's one thing when I go to different events and I have another couple of heritage events type things coming up pretty soon. And there are times when I may be the only person in the room who's not of Indian descent or Asian descent. But it's, it's really, I believe, worthwhile when we learn more about each other's backgrounds. And I think that's part of what Ethnic Studies really provides, that understanding so that we can build those relationships. And I really do appreciate the work of the Hindu Association providing us that opportunity. I also had a Streetsmart Advisory Committee meeting this past week. They have a event coming up, probably not until the fall at this point. I think it's going to be later this year and just scheduling wise, we'll move it out. And again, Streetsmart deals with street safety for bicyclists, elementary school, right up to distracted driving and everything with our, starts my program with CHP for high schoolers. The one other thing I did want to give some thank yous. Oh, I also, and I think several of us, attended Ceremony Rotary Club's luncheon last week, which was their, their annual educators luncheon, where they recognized a number of educators and really want to thank their Rotary Club for, for that recognition. And along the same lines, this past Saturday, Darty Valley Ceremony had their Truck Time event, which provides an opportunity for preschoolers to climb over a number of different kinds of trucks. The reason I bring it up here, I want to thank the, the district staff for having been there in attendance, as well as the Ed Fund staff and, and Streetsmart. We're all there providing information to young families. Particularly as we're talking about TK and kindergarten, it's really an opportunity for, you know, those young families to start getting more involved in our community and, and seeing as those kids get into our system. So I found that to be a, a great event as well. Coming up this next week, just more of the same. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for being here.